Good evening, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing as we will be having a moment of silence in honor of 9/11 last week, and then we will be treated this evening to the National Anthem by one of our talented 10th graders, Stella Frazier. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you all very much for... Thank you all for attending this evening. We apologize again for the rescheduling of tonight's Board meeting from last week. The Board would like to address the events of last week with all of you for a moment and let you all know in light of various social media posts, different articles, conversations that occurred in the moment last week as we were prepared to start our meeting. As most of you are all aware now, we received notification of two voicemails that came in. The contents of those concerned the Board of Education. Initially, we had a certain understanding of those, and when informed of that content, I walked down the line and informed my colleagues, and we made the decision that we wanted to at least notify everybody of what was going on. Additional content came to our attention as part of those two voicemails. It was at that moment we made the decision, the difficult decision, to cancel the Board meeting and evacuate the building. As a father myself of two children in this district, and all of us with children in the district, we had an athletic event going on in the gymnasium, and we had a building with families and parents and students. That will always be this Board's absolute number-one priority, is the safety and well-being of our students and our families. That is unconditional. For the last 25-plus years, we've all been conditioned to know, you see something, you say something. And that is precisely what we did. Those voicemails came juxtaposed to another school shooting that had occurred earlier in the day. The voicemails referenced the assassination of Charlie Kirk, and all of that is coming on the eve of 9/11 remembrance. We are not in a position to play woulda, shoulda, coulda. We made a decision, the best of our information. We stand by that decision. We thank all of our law enforcement partners. They conducted a proper investigation, and they assured us that it was absolutely okay to open the school buildings the following day, which is what we did. We had a significant increase to our security. This evening, you're going to hear a presentation about all of the additional precautions and protocols that the administrative team has implemented. We understand that it was disruptive. We understand that it was scary. We thank you for your cooperation and your patience. I will add one small comment for everyone. If there is a supposition in any way, shape, or form that we intentionally canceled the meeting to avoid discussing any topic, budget, facilities, Title IX, any discussion, our Board is always here, and we always listen to our community. A community member, while we were waiting outside last week, said to me, and he was absolutely right, and we agreed to it, "It's a sad day in democracy. It's a sad day in democracy if we cannot have civil, respectful discourse." It doesn't matter what side of the aisle you sit on. It does not matter what side of a discussion point you sit on. If we are incapable of having a discussion here as adults and hearing each other out, and we devolve to voicemails like were left on our voicemail machine, that is a terrible example for our students, and I'm embarrassed by that. Again, we thank you for your patience. We thank you for going through this inconvenience and having the meeting tonight, and we absolutely thank you for attending and for watching at home. Thank you. First up on the agenda will be public comment. Lisa McLaughlin?
As a reminder to the public, the first public comment meeting is only for items on tonight's agenda. If there is anything else we'd like to discuss, please wait in the second public comment period this evening.
Is it on? Okay, it's on.
And it's about the items?
Yes, it's included in my comment. Lisa McLaughlin, Bayville. Good evening. Locust Valley has made all of the major newspapers, but for all the wrong reasons. This was shockingly bad news. What George Vasloo did on the evening of September 10th, the very day of Charlie Kirk's assassination, was beyond reprehensible. The district deleted the livestream from YouTube of George standing at the dais, microphone in hand, to spew his lies about the back-to-back voicemails, making himself and the rest of the Board victims. You can't hide the video. We have it. Any media outlet who wants it, please contact me after this meeting. The fact that Dr. Turnow amplified Vasloo's heinous lies through emails and by restricting student activities exposed an incredible display of cognitive dissonance by the leader of the district. Shame on you, George. Shame on you, Kristen. Both of you must resign. People who will inflict fear on an entire school district because they are unable to differentiate between a drunk's wrong number and a gun threat certainly should not be in charge of deciding the educational programs for the children. You exploited the pain and fear of the LVCSD community so you wouldn't have to face comments from the public about the district's policy on trans students. Parents were afraid to send their kids to school the next day on 9/11. You abused the services of the Nassau and Suffolk County Police and DHS. While I believe filing a false report is criminal, at this point in time, your immediate resignations will suffice. Many of my questions from the 8/27 meeting have gone unanswered. This district, in my opinion, has gone to hell in a handbasket, and now I see why. In August, you launched a secretive investigation into your fellow trustee via the vaguest resolution possible with our tax dollars. Why? Under Dr. Turnow's recommendation and Mr. Vasloo's presidency, the Board adopted a code of conduct that refers to gender identity eight times. Tonight, your consent agenda contains the eighth-grade trip. Did it not cross your minds that the trans policy issue should be addressed in public, specifically regarding overnight hotel stays and room arrangements? Does LVCSD wish to follow state or federal law? A district that tries to shut down public discussion of controversial issues concerning children with a fake gun threat needs an awakening. The fish rots from the head. Let me be clear, an apology isn't gonna cut it this time.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Barbara... Vavona? Ron Marshon?
I'm here to speak about the policy meeting I attended last Thursday, I guess it was. I'd like to poll, starting with the three trustees that were at that meeting. Lauren Themis, are you for or against Title IX?
The question is for or against Title IX, federal or state?
The federal. Trump's executive order, Title IX, for women's sports and locker rooms. Are you for it?
I'm only in support of the federal version of Title IX.
Holly? Are you for?
I am for the federal definition of Title IX.
Not the definition. Are you for supporting Trump's executive order for Title IX over Hochul's?
Yes, I would prefer to support the Trump's order.
Yes, I am.
Christina?
Can you repeat the question?
Are you for supporting the executive order, Trump's Title IX, or Hochul's against it?
I'm for following the law.
Which law, federal or state?
The law that applies to our school district.
Which law would you like to follow here, the federal or the state? They're conflicting laws, so you have to take a side.
I don't... We are working on opinions for this. If federal law applies...
So you don't have an answer. Okay, we'll move on.
If federal law applies, then that's what we should be following.
The federal law is crystal clear. Lindsay? Yes. You what? No, I'm polling all. I started with them, because I want to see who the majority... If we have a majority, it's simple. We should just follow Massepiquis. It's not a matter of finding a way. We have a way. Nick?
I'm for following the federal executive order.
So it's very simple. We have a majority. Oh, George, I forgot to ask you. Are you for following the federal law?
I am in favor of following the federal law.
So we have a majority. We have a governor that's out of her mind, and she's supporting a socialist communist for mayor. We have to do what's right for our kids, our students, and our community. So screw Governor Hochul and follow the federal law that Trump has given us. It's simple. Don't worry about lawsuits, Matt. Just do it. The community will support you if we get sued. You're talking about a handful of students versus the majority. My daughter wants to leave the school because boys are going into the girls' locker room. It's just wrong. So stand up for what the community wants, and we spent a million and a half dollars to build this transgender locker room. Let them use that. Everyone has a right to go into the locker room, just certain locker rooms. Thank you.
Ms. Vavona, would you like to get up and make your comment now, rather than wait until the end?
What I don't understand is how school districts do not band together and tell Hochul to stick it, okay? Having boys in girls' locker rooms and bathrooms, in my opinion, I'm sorry, is disgusting. In Loudoun County, Virginia, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there was a boy who pretended to be a girl so he could get into a girls' locker room, and he assaulted her. It was swept under the carpet. That boy was then transferred to another school where he did it again. One incident like this is too much. Where I come from, this would be beyond the pale. You would have 100, 200 fathers up here raising almighty hell. This does not fly. I have a small granddaughter, thank God, she's still a baby, but if she was in this school right now, you would have a big problem. I have attorneys that are very close friends, and there would be lawsuits, because this cannot go on. It's not cool to allow this to happen. The woke crap has to stop. I understand there are issues, how these children feel, don't get me wrong. I have a heart, but maybe something else could be figured out besides letting the mix of sexes in locker rooms and bathrooms. That's an idea, have a third area. What would be a problem with that? Then why are they still going into... So you're allowing the boys to go into the girls' locker rooms? Is that what... See, I don't have a child in the school, so I don't know what's going on. I'm just PO'd in general, so that's why I'm asking. So the boys are going into the locker rooms in these schools. Is anybody gonna answer me instead of just looking at me? That's why I didn't write any... I just put bullet points, because I like to look people in the eye when I talk to them, and I expect an answer. Oh, okay, so why don't they put that in the middle of the boys' locker room? Wouldn't that be better? And my time is up. Thank you.
We're going to continue to reports to the Board. A review of the district's safety protocols, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ken Packard, and the Executive Director of Administrative Operations and Technology. I'm gonna give a quick overview of the safety plan along and the safety discussion that we had last September 10th last year. I also have the link to the presentation in this presentation that's gonna be posted tonight, so you can go back. That was a rather long presentation, about an hour and a half long, and I didn't want to do that tonight, but I didn't want you to not have the information, so it's in this plan. And then I'm gonna go into the things that we've added to our safety plan in the last year. So, boy, that's a lot of clicking. So, safety plan overview, I'll do that. We added incident commanders at every elementary school. We've been working on integrating the disparate security mechanisms that we had into one cohesive, integrated system, and we'll also go over the building-level emergency plan review that we do by September 15th each year. So, the first thing are the standard non-negotiables. We have a district-wide safety committee. We have a safety plan for each school. We share the plan with the staff each year. We do mental health training for teachers, teaching assistants, and school leaders. We do drills. We have a response team in each building. We have zero tolerance for behaviors that jeopardize the safety of others. We redid the code of conduct over the last 12 months, and that's in place. You know, we are... We really have been doing a lot on the safety front. We continue to go do that. Safety-wide team members are represented by the Superintendent, Dr. Turnow, Eric, Director of Facilities, Board of Education trustees, building principals and administrators, our POP officers that are actually here, Homeland Security, local fire departments, teachers, transportation, lead nurse, and parents. So this is a really wide team, and all of the details, again, are... You can see from the presentation. So if you go to that link, I know it's in here, but it will be linked in this presentation, so you can get there. That's our presentation from last year. Okay. So what we did since then was we added... We saw that we had an issue with the elementary schools, and we partnered with the teachers. They were really great, because we came together and got teachers at each of the elementary schools, as well as some in the deans in the middle school and high school, to get trained to be an incident commander. And the primary goal of that is to be there when the principal isn't. So now we have a protocol. Who has the radio? Who's in charge? They have training. They know what... All the officers, they know what to do, and we dealt with the training as, what would you do for the first five or 10 minutes of an emergency? And we have multiple people and a method to designate, so the buildings are never left uncovered at this point. We got... Everybody became FEMA ICS-100 trained, and we did a whole bunch of stuff with tabletop exercises, like getting everybody used to what could possibly happen. We went over all of the building, all of the district plans, like where do you go if you have to leave the campus? Where's the next site that you have to go to? We went over when you call, who you call, and when do you declare a lockdown or a lockout. We went over how the radios work, how to connect them to the... How to make a call from your phone to the PA system, so that you can make calls and notify people. We went into the nitty-gritty of what it takes to actually lead a building, and so I'm really proud of having over a dozen people now incident command trained, and we're gonna continue with that training. So that's an ongoing effort. Each year, we Each year, we do incrementally more. Okay. So then the next thing is, we've been taking, we had all of these systems, we're all disconnected, and so now through, we use a product from Verkata that integrates the security cameras, the access readers, and now we have the new lockdown system, so the blue buttons, there's one back there, that do lockdown, they're now all integrated together, so when we hit lockdown, it locks all the doors out. So we've really stepped up, like, when you scan your card, the video is connected to who scanned the card. We really have done a lot, as well as updated the visitor management system, so that's all integrated together now. And then lastly, go over the building level emergency plan review. So this is what we do each year, it's mandatory, we do yearly training, we just finished for September, by September 15th, and it's all of the pieces of the particular of their building and what it takes, what happens when there's an emergency. So it's nice to have this, you know, 50,000-foot level, but when you have your kids, what do you do? Who's got the, we have paddles for red and green, and we signify, like, we have this down, and we just finished that as well, and mental health and violence prevention is also part of the training that we're doing on GCN, so we're covering all the bases with that. So, with that, any questions?
No, but thank you.
I pass the audition.
Next, we have the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I wanted to really reach out to our parent councils for their incredible support in making the start of the school year so welcoming, especially for our little ones. On the Bayville side, they hosted a lovely bagels and coffee event, while on the Locust Valley side, they had a very heartfelt tears and cheers. These events truly set a positive tone for our community, and none of it would be possible without the dedication of our parent volunteers, I really wanted to thank them. We all split up in district office and got to see all the children on the first, really we've been in the buildings almost every day, which has been a great opportunity for us. We've also seen firsthand, you know, when you're looking at the elementary students coming back from the summer with their brand-new backpacks and their school supplies, they're very proud, many of their names are adorned on everything, their classrooms are filled with all-new engaging activities, everything is sparkling clean, of course, you can see how beautiful the auditorium is, I hope you love our new flooring, all the seats were removed and everything was put back in so beautifully, new acoustics, so the sound probably sounds a little bit better even when I'm speaking, really just to help our school districts, you know, become perfect for the students that we serve. At our middle school and high school, I was equally impressed, we had students joyfully unlocking their lockers and really settling back into the routine, it was fun to be in the schools the first two weeks, and for me, I really wanted to share this with you, something that a student said, you know, sometimes we talk about cell phones, and we had these conversations, how did the kids feel? That's really important to us. And something one of the students said, when they retrieve their cell phones at the end of the day, they opened it up and they said, you know what, it was so great, I had no notifications. And all of us know how hard this is sometimes for us as adults, but to give children that space to just learn and just to be with their friends during the day, I really wanted to thank the community, thank the parents, because it's, it's all of us, it's not just us at the schoolhouse, it's the parents that send their children here with those messages, and it has been extremely successful, you know, in speaking with both our middle school principal, Mr. Sistaro, and our high school principal, Mr. Di Clemente, just to walk the halls and to see the children engaged in what we want them to be, each other. We want them talking to their teachers, we want them talking to one another, and our teaching staff, you know, reports back, we have our first teachers' union meeting this week, and I know from speaking with many of them that they're just so happy, because all they really want is the kids engaged in their classrooms. You know, as a former elementary teacher, we're very selfish, we want those kids paying attention to us all day long, that's why we come to work, that's why we love being at work, so we're really grateful for our new cellphone policy and really everyone upholding it, because that's really where the rubber hits the road. As I go into classrooms and I kind of ask kids, and this one's funny because we're going to do a presentation tonight on food, but one of the students in the classrooms, I, you know, I always ask him, what's your favorite thing? And he's like, the taco bar. And everyone was like, the taco bar. So apparently that's a very big hit here. Also, last week, if you did not get a chance, Fox News had contacted us, and we were able to coordinate a couple of classroom visitations, so really a special thanks to Mrs. Begon, Mrs. Holes, and Mrs. Dermott, who were featured in Bayville Primary School, working with our students, and Dr. Gaglione, they had attended her Advanced International Relations students, and I don't like to get in the camera at all, but I love to talk to the kids after they've had an opportunity to speak to the press, and after they had an opportunity of, you know, going through the lesson, and they were so excited. It's a really exciting moment for them when they get to share their knowledge, sometimes with outside people. And then finally, this is very heartfelt, but you may notice on our personal action report this evening that one of our very beloved teachers, school administrators, one-time high school graduate here, Mr. Joe Anaya, has put in his resignation, he's accepted a really wonderful position, that's great for his family, and I'm going to ask Dr. Sempino to read his statement, because he wanted it read to all of you.
Good evening, everyone. I was very touched when Mr. Anaya reached out and shared his words for me to read today. This is from Mr. Anaya. I want to share my deepest gratitude for the overwhelming support I have received following the announcement of my resignation from the district. Locust Valley has been my home for my entire life, and being part of this community has been one of the greatest privileges. Though I am moving on, I will always carry the spirit of being a Falcon with me. I would like to be clear that the decision to leave is rooted in my personal choice, to pursue an opportunity that allows me more time with my family and eases the strain of a long commute, two concerns that I have shared with many over the years. This was not an easy decision, but it is one that at this time is best for me and my family. I leave with nothing but appreciation for the students, families, colleagues, and friends who have shaped my journey here. I have seen firsthand how much the Locust Valley community cares for its children, and I hope the spirit continues to guide every decision moving forward. My greatest wish is that the district and community work hand in hand to continue to provide outstanding opportunities for all students, so that they may grow, thrive, and achieve their fullest potential. Locust Valley has given me far more than I can ever repay, and I will forever be proud to call this community my own. Once a Falcon, always a Falcon, Joe Anaya. Joe, we wish you the absolute best. I personally want to thank you for welcoming me to the district almost four years ago, this is my fourth year. It has been wonderful to work with you on so many projects, especially building our business program, our wonderful DECA club with our teachers and our Model UN, as well as some wonderful elementary social studies projects that we've done, so I appreciate you. I thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to the next item, which is a resolution establishing an ex-officio student board member, the community should know that we are required to identify an ex-officio member of the board in order to get student voice on the dais and into our board meetings. We've been very proud as a board for the six years that I've been on the board, that we've always had a student voice, every month with the student report from the President and Vice President. Rather than codifying it in our policies, because we do believe we are already abiding by what the requirements are, we have a resolution this evening to lay out the process by which these individuals have been selected, and then they'll take the oath of office, which is very exciting. So, be it resolved that in accordance with Education Law Section 1702.3 and 1804.12, the Board of Education hereby establishes the process for designating at least one student as an oficio member of the Locust Valley Central School District's Board of Education. Be it further resolved that for the 25-26 academic year, the Board of Education designates the duly-elected President and Vice President of the High School Student Government as ex-officio members of the Locust Valley Central School District's Board of Education, provided these individuals have attended the district high school for at least one year. The ex-officio student members of the board shall be entitled to sit with board members at all public meetings and hearings of the board, and may participate in other board activities and responsibilities at the discretion of the board. The ex-officio student members shall not be allowed to vote, shall not be allowed to attend executive sessions, or any other meetings or hearings not open to the public, and shall not be entitled to receive compensation of any form for participating at board meetings. Do I have any discussion on the resolution? Just want to say congratulations to you guys, happy to have you guys up here. Can I have a motion to entertain the resolution, please? Lauren, second? Holly? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations, gentlemen.
This is the oath of office for Grant Creden as ex-officio student board member at the Locust Valley Central School District for a one-year term of office commencing September 15th, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. You're going to repeat after me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a board member of education.
The duties of a board member of education.
Locust Valley Central School District.
Locust Valley Central School District.
Town of Oyster Bay.
Town of Oyster Bay.
Nassau County, New York.
Nassau County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
This is the oath of office for Christian Seccone as ex-officio student board member of the Locust Valley Central School District for a one-year term of office commencing September 15th, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. You'll repeat after me. Okay, you're going to hold that? Raise your right hand? There you go. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a member of the Board of Education.
The duties of a member of the Board of Education.
Locust Valley Central School District.
Locust Valley Central School District.
Town of Oyster Bay.
Town of Oyster Bay.
Nassau County, New York.
Nassau County, New York.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, gentlemen. And now, would you like to provide the student report for the month? Please.
Hi, all. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. Vasileu for introduction. Good evening, Dr. Turnow, members of the board, and everyone in attendance tonight. My name is Grant Creden, I'm a senior at Locust Valley High School, and I'm honored to serve as student government president. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and the energy you invest in making our schools the wonderful learning environment we know them to be. As we begin the new school year, we are excited not just about homecoming and senior year traditions, but also college applications, learning, and making an impact in our community. As student leaders, we hope to improve involvement, increase school spirit, and make sure every voice is heard. On a personal note, I would like to thank Dr. Turnow for selecting me to serve as the ex-officio member of the board. I look forward to working with you all throughout the year to make Locust Valley even better than it already is. Thank you.
We'll continue now with committee reports. Audit Committee?
No report.
Budget and Finance, no report this month. Curriculum Committee?
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee did meet a couple weeks ago, it was really a beginner cadence into what we'll be looking into for the year. First and foremost, the Board of Education have requested a new process and procedure for reviewing and approving curriculum, that is one of the responsibilities of the Board of Ed trustees. The, with the help of Dr. Janine Sempino, we did come up with a new schedule that will commence next month in October, and that will begin with a presentation by her and her team on some of the anticipated courses that we're looking for, for next year. This will now give the Board of Education, as well as the community, an opportunity to see down the road as far as what coursework we are looking to introduce, be able to weigh in, and obviously share that a little bit broader with the community, and that, that will move through a approval process. And so we will start that beginning in October. And then we'll be coming out with a calendar of events, probably after our next meeting, to discuss what that looks like. We also did engage in an ongoing conversation as far as digital use, that's something that we consistently are looking at, we are very happy and pleased to see there is extremely minimal electronic digital learning in our K2 buildings. It is the goal of all of the Board of Education that we get pen back to paper, that kids are using real books, real paper, and that we'll also have a limited look in our 3 to 5 building, but those conversations will continue on how we can get books back into our middle and high schoolers as well. And it's been fantastic work as we've moved along over the past few months, so we'll, we'll be back with more updates on that. Did I miss anything, Holly?
No, that was good.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities Committee? We had a Facilities Committee meeting early there, earlier this month. We have good news that the state has approved our permits for both the library as well as the cafeteria. Those bids will be going out in December, based upon our architect and Eric's advice, we're hoping to maximize and get the best pricing in December. We also identified, in order to get more, ideally more community involvement in various bids and offers for work, the team is going to be creating a procurement page on our website, and all of the bids that we have, as well as how to go about submitting bids for those projects, will be on our website, and we'll begin promoting that through our social media and through our website as well, in hopes of broadening the bid process overall. Policy Committee?
Thank you, George. The Policy Committee met on last Wednesday evening, I do thank all of those in attendance. I will give you an update on strictly the policy meeting that occurred last week, first and foremost, we did review Policy 90. First and foremost, we did review Policy 9244. That was for part-time and substitute professional staff. That will be put on to abolish at a future meeting. We also talked about the requirement for new school meals and USDA provisions. This is required because of new language that we will have to incorporate because of the free school meals. So there'll be multiple policies. We are awaiting language from Ingerman Smith for those two policies. We also brought back to the table a group of policies, Series 0100, which is equal opportunity and educational opportunity. This, obviously, I know is a policy that many were there to listen in on, primarily Policy 5020.4, student gender identity. We did discuss the history of that policy, starting back in 2019. NISBA, which is a New York State School Board Association, sent this policy to all districts, telling them all that they were required to have this policy. It was put into effect then. And in 2023, under the Policy Committee, under Margaret Marshon, we started to review this policy. It was the board's position at that time unanimously that we were looking to move to the federal version of Title IX, and there were multiple ways and pathways to go about doing that. In 2024, we hired Nick Rigano as private counsel, who was hired to review Title IX with the district and help us with language and policy changes that were required to move to the federal definition of Title IX. We went through multiple iterations of draft policies and language, multiple meetings with both Nick Rigano and the district attorney, and had multiple conversations regarding federal versus state. And again, at that time, it was still made as a decision by the Board of Education to follow and make changes to allow for the following of the federal Title IX. This work was stalled in November of last year, and was put to a stop in April of this year. We were advised by the administration in April that we would be following the state at the advice of Ingerman Smith, and as I am now the new policy chair for this year, I'm going to be picking up the torch where Margaret left off, and we are looking to bring back a way in which we can legally address the return of the federal Title IX language. That is the work of the Policy Committee. It is our job, obviously, to rely on counsel. To be very clear, the, what we have been told is that the state will come after us and take your money, and they will kick us all off the board, and the federal government has also made it very clear that they will remove our federal funding. Now, the work of the Policy Committee specifically is that we have to either abolish the policy, amend the policy, or create a new policy. And so there was no action taken at the past meeting to take any new steps, but this was put on, obviously, the agenda for the next meeting. That is the policy update that we have from our meeting, and I would be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge that I know most of you in this room tonight are here for this. As a parent, I just want to be very clear. The district right now, as the policy stands, does allow transgender students into our bathrooms and our locker rooms. And so I am telling, I make, I have made it very clear. I have had a target on my back for six years. I have endured quite a bit in this district. My first public meeting, I was doxxed. I am under investigation by members of this Board of Education, and I am here to tell you that every student in this district should have the safety and the privacy that they deserve, especially our youngest ones. So I say that genuinely. I say it confidently. I do believe there are members of this board that are walking that path, but I am bold in my resolve for your children, for all the kids, and so I just want to thank you all for being here.
Just a few words. Lauren, thanks. I appreciate the recap of what happened at the policy meeting last week. I'm also on that committee as well, and, you know, when I joined this board, I got some tips from outgoing board members, one of which was, I still hear it in my head, that this is like a game of whack-a-mole, and I think you guys have heard that too, right? Like, there's a lot of challenges that come with being a board member, in that we get to, you know, hear all of the complexities of an issue and try to attack it as best we can, and it still holds true today, and what Lauren said is absolutely right. This is a very complex issue, and where, you know, where we see the problem is, and it's tough because we strategize in executive sessions and we can't tell the public what specific strategies are because they're privileged and confidential, and they involve talking about children, and we can't do that. What we can do is give you some assurance that we're really working on this very hard, and it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing, because Lauren just said, you know, something that really concerns me is how punitive and draconian the state can be if they catch wind of us trying to do something that upsets them. And I, for one, was elated when I saw the Trump executive orders, right? I felt like it was a breath of fresh air that we needed to get this, to move this issue along. And at the same time, I have to be fiscally responsible to this entire community and just tell you the truth about the hurdles that we face, and that is that unfortunately, New York State doesn't back down from their positions either, and they're very firm, and actually, we all know this because we had to take them to court on a regionalization issue. So it's, it's not something that we can just approach from a very narrow perspective. We have to find a path, in my opinion, I'm speaking for me, that includes getting the result that we want, at the same time minimizing risk to this district. That is the balancing act. And for us, the risk is real. I mean, you just heard Lauren state that we could lose state funding if we don't adhere to state law that we're currently obligated to follow. We could conversely lose federal funding if we don't listen to the Trump executive order. I could be wrong. I think the state funding component for our budget is about five and a half or six million dollars, 5.4, and then federal funding is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So you could see that we are caught in the middle of a fight between two governmental bodies, and the art for us is to get them to talk to each other in a way that resolves this without any sort of punitive penalty being imposed on us, because what we can't have, and John is here, and he knows this because we spoke about this, what we can't have is a loss of five or six million dollars to our budget. It would be devastating to us. It would, it would mean services would be lost. It would mean a variety of things that would impact our kids and your daily lives, and so that's why this is such an important issue. Karen, like, if we lost five or six million dollars from our budget, where would you have to, in your humble opinion, like, where would, there you are, I'm sorry, where would you have to look to kind of deal with that?
Unfortunately, whenever you look at a cut like that, we would really have to look, you can't avoid it, at staffing, at teacher staffing. That's where the bulk of it is. We could, of course, we would have to really look at everything. So when you look at teacher staffing, you're looking at class size. What are we offering our students at the secondary level? You know, then we look at some of our electives, our driver's education, our EMT classes. I mean, I think there would be a lot that we would need to look at.
And we want to avoid all of that, right?
I am going to butt in for a minute.
I just, I just wanted to finish, and then you can have it. I just want to say that we are working on a strategy that gets us there, and it's, it is not something that we take lightly. We're working on this hard in executive sessions, and we intend to have, you know, a solution that gets us to where we want to be as a community, to not have confusion, to have clarity, and at the same time, not have to suffer the risks of losing funding.
Matt, I understand where you're coming from with finance, and of course, numbers can be scary, but I just want to be very clear that for me, and I believe for many of us here, including you, Matt, that the morality trumps the finance. And as I brought up to the board, we spend five million dollars a year on capital improvement projects. Now, I love capital improvement projects, but do I think we could survive without new turf and big projects? I just want to be very clear. I don't see the finances in the same light. Do I think it is an issue? Do I think we're being held hostage? Yes. Do I think they hold money over our heads disgustingly? Yes. Do I think we're in the middle of a war between the state and federal, and everybody's, you know, holding up the big guns? Of course. But when everyone's acting like children, we're supposed to be the adults in the room, and I think I would like the conversation personally to stay with, where do we stand as people? What do we feel is the most important thing to do to protect the safety of all the kids? And then how do we find a way to make that work? And I do believe we will. I do. But these big conversations will have to be had. Money is, you know, the root of all evil, they say, and it will definitely be part of the equation. We will be bringing the community along for those conversations, especially when it comes to policy, and I think it's good for everybody to be aware, but I think it's also something we all have to come to terms with. So I do appreciate you bringing it up.
No, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying, and I don't want to sound like that's, it's the be-all, end-all, and the only analysis. I'm just saying that as we sit here as your board trustees, we have to at least tell you, right? We have to give you full disclosure of an issue so that you, the public, can make an informed decision about what we're doing. That's all I'm saying.
I'd like to make a statement on this topic tonight, too. Lauren and Matt, thank you. I've spoken with many of you over the summer and the past few weeks about the topic of transgender students being permitted to access school facilities such as bathrooms that have traditionally been protected, spaces for one biological sex. Like me, most of you have expressed your compassion for all of our students, including those who may be struggling with who they are, and I really appreciated how that came first, and that we acknowledged at the end of the day, we're just talking about our kids, the children of this community, and how we all feel a sense of responsibility for them and their well-being, and how at the very heart of this community is that unshakable truth that every one of our kids deserves to be safe, and it's our job to protect them. At the very center of this issue that we're talking about are parents and children who are struggling with the idea that their child, or they themselves, may not belong in the mainstream, however one may define that, and that it's scary and distressing to believe that your child may not fit in or have friends, maybe too different or misunderstood to the point of isolation, which is something I believe actually happens to most kids at one point or another in school. That desire for our children to be accepted is not political. It's human. We all share it in this room, and regardless of the extreme opinions on either side of the political-cultural spectrum we're living in right now, our conversations have made me realize there are a tremendous amount of people in our community and across our country who don't want to be a part of the polarizing arguments. We are just desperate for truth, and we want the best solutions, and we're longing for a time where we could ask honest questions and engage in respectful discourse because, without being attacked or labeled with hateful slurs. In the words of the late Charlie Kirk, who I greatly admired for his passion and incredible gift for respectful, honest, and open intellectual debate, that is what is so important to our country, to find our disagreements respectfully, because when people stop talking, that's when violence happens. Now, you'll have to forgive me, I'm going to run a little bit long, but I promise I'll wrap it up. I want to commend all of you for showing up tonight, and my fellow board members, for showing up with the willingness to lean into these differences and have very uncomfortable conversations, because we cannot come up with the best solutions for our children unless we are morally courageous enough to have these discussions to start. So where do I stand? It's a question that I've been asked a lot lately. My belief is clear and unwavering that the physical differences between men and women have shaped our roles, our responsibilities, and our vulnerabilities throughout history and across societies. Both men and women required, and still require, spaces of safety and privacy. These spaces represent more than physical boundaries. They serve as mechanisms for survival and dignity and even cultural stability, and they allow individuals to build solidarity and cultivate identity and to strengthen bonds within their sex. Today, the question of male and female spaces has resurfaced with a vengeance for a reason that eludes many, and while many will rightly emphasize equality, we cannot deny the historical wisdom embedded in our traditional male and female spaces. If a child who is questioning their sexuality or their identity feels safer, or has a greater sense of belonging with the opposite sex, that is understandable. I think we could all understand that completely, but they need private space and opportunity solutions that maintain the rights and protections of all students. And that is what I stand for, helping to keep every child safe, and while this is my own statement and I do not represent the board, I know that my fellow trustees and members of the administration stand in that belief with me. We want to mitigate the risk of children saying or doing things to one another that they're hearing or seeing all over social media, but in today's world could land them as being labeled as something they're really not, or a punishing lawsuit, or some other awful legacy that now has to follow them into adulthood because of one stupid word, one stupid name. Our children need guidance and guardrails, not attacks on their character and permanent scars, and so I ask of the federal government and the New York State government, as Matt and Lauren have said, we will pursue our pathways. Come together to clarify what are we supposed to be doing here. They have left us and every other school district in this state to navigate what feels so simple and right to so many in an incredibly complex legal and policy-driven landscape. We are told to follow the law or risk punishment. Which law do we follow, and which law do we break? Sounds like we have some consensus in the room tonight, but what extreme punitive measures or penalties are we then hit with when all we are trying to do is to help our girls and boys, all of them? This is one of the most urgent topics of our time, and many of us are afraid to talk about it for fear of being labeled. That's a disappointment to me. As a law-abiding citizen, a mom, a taxpayer, a board member, and someone who works, I am asking for more. We need help. We need solutions that protect the rights of all children, solutions that respect the needs of biological- needs of biological girls and boys, while making space for those who feel different and are searching for where they belong. Solutions that hold kids accountable but leave room for growth, and forgiveness, and second chances. I have a message for all of the students who may be listening to this meeting right now. Lead with your character, grow into your dreams, and make a positive and lasting difference in this world. Don't just argue, do not lose yourselves in a doom scroll. Get up, go, live, and do. Be kind, be good, and do your very best in everything. Apply yourself, don't waste your time or effort. And further to that, whether you are or grow up to be gay, or straight, or questioning who you believe yourself to be, I just want you to know that I think you're perfect as you are. You are exactly as you are meant to be, and you are entirely unique and beautiful. You are loved, and you are not alone. Every adult in this room is here because they care. We want you all to be who you are truly while protecting you at this tender, young age, which we all know can be rife with confusion, longing, rage, passion, loneliness, and so much physical, emotional, and mental change. We do not have the answers yet. We may not have the perfect systems in place, but we do have the power to choose how we're going to treat each other as we get there. And in light of recent events, I would ask that we all choose unity over division, dignity over shame, and compassion over fear. Because if we do that, then we will truly be the adults that our children need us to be. Thank you for listening.
Public Relations and Communications Committee?
Uh, no report, thank you.
Technology Committee?
No report.
Other reports from any trustees? We'll move on then to some unfinished business. We're having a presentation on our food services.
Can I say something?
You can sign up for public comment at the end, ma'am.
Sorry, the, our policy is very clear.
Please sign up for public comment.
I have a clipboard right on my desk.
No, for the, we have another section of public.
There's a clipboard, ma'am. There's a clipboard right here.
Hello. A few years ago, the Board of Education made a commitment to improve our food service program. This resulted in, in the district bringing in an outside food service provider to manage our food service operations, Aramark. Tonight, we have a presentation from Aramark, from the Aramark team, that includes Melissa. She's the onsite food service director. Grace, our senior district manager, and Carrie, which is over there, our general manager, to see where we are now. So I'm going to leave the presentation for them.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to first start off by saying, we have some samples in the back over there. Please feel free to help yourselves. It's, uh, samples of food that we do in the cafeteria. There are smoothies, strawberry banana smoothies, there is a non-dairy smoothie that we do that's very popular in the school. A little hummus sample, we make our homemade hummus, so we have samples of that, and there's some fresh fruit that we provide every day. So please feel free to help yourselves. So at Locust Valley, we believe that nutritious, high-quality meals are essential for student success. We are proud to provide delicious and healthy options that students love, prepared with ingredients that you can trust. Only trusted brand name products. We partner with brands parents know and respect to ensure quality and safety. Like, we use Tyson Chicken, we use 100% ground beef, our eggs are fresh, we use great egg, great egg, fresh eggs. We are, our fruits and vegetables, we serve our fresh produce. We never use canned produce. We use fresh fruit every day. We get our produce delivery every week to ensure freshness. We all are, we are trying to, a number of our dishes are made from scratch. A lot is mainly in the high school, because we have the resources there, right? We have staffing, we have the equipment. We are working to doing that in the elementary schools as well. Our bakery, we get fresh bakery products in every day. So ensuring the safety of students with food allergies is also one of our top priorities. We have implemented a comprehensive allergen management program that includes ongoing training, clear protocols, and specialized resources to provide safe and accommodating meal options for our students. We do a annual safe, uh, safety training. I conduct that twice a year. We also provide all our kitchens with allergen kits that they have, and the staff is properly trained on that. There is a very strict protocol in place for allergies. What we do is, um, we do also POS training, that is a register. So in it, we have, um, if you could see on this, so what we do is we put anaphylaxis on alert. So we have students that have numerous allergies on it. So in order for our cashier to go ahead, they have to click on each one. They will not let them go ahead unless, because sometimes like that down arrow, there's many. So that's just like an added layer. We offer a SARP, we call it SARP with Aramark, it's a Student Allergy Readiness Plan. So I work with the nurses and the principals on that, where we just go through every protocol, whether, so the monitors are aware of the allergies. We have a separate allergen refrigerator in each cafeteria. So where, I, I urge parents to call me, they send me emails. If their kid has an allergy, they will email me, let me know what, what their student wants. And we, we communicate with the cooks and just to make sure that we are covering every layer of protection on that. We also offer, um, so I work with a lot of allergen parents that have dairy allergies. So we have like, um, non-dairy, um, we have pizza that we get in, we get in dairy-free cheeses, um, we have numerous gluten-free products that we get in, muffins, bagels, bread. So all the parents are urged to contact me, and we go over a plan on, in place with that. We work with the nurses and the teachers, as well as myself. So for the high school, we do, um, a lot of homemade, scratch-made products. So we use fresh eggs, we have a grill that we make fresh eggs every morning. We do homemade muffins, Belgian muffles, French toast, homemade pancakes. We also have a bagel bar with homemade cream cheeses. We do, um, we make our own cream cheese, we do like a cinnamon, we do strawberry, we do a chocolate chip, we do a straw, uh, veggie, um, we do a scallion, that's very popular. Um, oh, wait. Um, so we also have a bunch of different stations we do. We offer a taco bar, a lo mein bar, a baked potato bar, pasta bar, yoga bars, on a working basis. Usually the yoga bar we do every day, we will implement that when we get more staffing in. We do a number of different dishes, like the General Chow Chicken, um, we do chicken broccoli, we do sausage and peppers, smash burgers, Philly cheesesteaks. We have, um, so Aramark has a different, like a lot of LTO offers, where it's limited time offer meals that they do. So it's a different one every month. Today, it was like a chicken fajita, it was like a spicy on a flack bread. That was really, like, actually, the kids liked that one. It was like, um, it was very spicy, but we got a lot of good feedback from it. We offer different, um, fresh paninis, we do different salad choices at the high school level, protein bites, which is very popular. We do homemade pizza. The pizza, like, is not frozen pizza that we take out of a freezer, we get that from, we make it from scratch. We got the dough, we put the cheese on, we put the pizza sauce on. We also do our vegetables. Our vegetables are, we get the produce once a week. So what we do is like, with the potatoes, we get the potatoes, we cut it up, we roast it, um, we do broccoli like that, um, fresh broccoli, we roast, um, zucchini, that's all. We're implementing that in the elementary level as well, that's starting this year. This is just some of our meals that we do, the baked potatoes that we do, we do fried rice, we have the grill at the high school that we do fried rice on the grill, um, protein bites that are a big hit, especially for the athletes. We could, we keep open our line at the high school until like 3:15, so that way the athletes can come in and grab something before they practice. We make homemade calzones, if you've seen that picture, and we have our Belgian muffles, which is pretty popular. Okay, this is our serving lines at the high school. We have the yoga bar, there's a taco bar that's very popular, um, our fresh cream cheeses, the bagel station, and we, that's just our lo mein bar, and just, um, a, just different bars that we have, a pasta bar. So for the elementary level, I have made some changes this year. Instead of offering the egg patties, we switched to fresh eggs. So we make our eggs in the morning every day, um, we took away the pizza every day, and, um, we substituted that for a hummus plate every day, um, which, believe it or not, actually, I was actually surprised the elementary schools, they are, you know, we get maybe like four, um, a day on that. We're doing more, I'm trying to put more variety in the menu, so we took away the brunch for lunch that was featured, um, every week, we're only doing that twice a week, so that way we can do more, um, different meals, um, trying to go with more scratch-made items, like, uh, more, like pasta dishes we do, um, just trying to put a little variety in the menu. So the à la carte menu, I want to bring up that. So I did switch the à la carte in the elementary schools. I took away a lot of the, um, bagged chips, I don't, I don't do that anymore in the elementary level. I offer more of like Annie's Grand Crackers that are non-GMO, um, we do, um, we also offer like a, a protein, like whether it's a hard-boiled egg, or, believe it or not, the kids do love that. We offer homemade chocolate chip cookie, um, we offer, uh, ices where they're 100% fruit juice, um, and they're no dairy, uh, no allergies in it. So, um, I try to limit the snacks with the allergies in it. For the elementary level, the breakfast we do, like an egg and vegetable frittata, um, we do the egg and cheese bacon, or just regular egg and cheese on a tortilla, um, the avocado toast we do, um, we have the fresh avocados where we make our avocado toast. And we also do homemade muffins, as you could see, um, we do the, the smoothies are very big. I'm going to do like a sampling day in each of the elementary schools to try different smoothies. So I'm working with the principals on that. We do overnight oats, um, trying to get the kids to get a like into that. I've been working, going around to the elementary schools, especially with the breakfast, so they understand what, what is a meal, right? So I've been going there and working with, um, a lot of the elementary school kids on that. As you could see, um, that is a meal, like the Cheerios, they can offer a cheese stick with that, um, they can have a fruit, any type of fruit, they can have a juice, or a milk. So at the elementary level, we are trying to do more fresh and flavorful, um, items. We have pasta salads that we do, um, yogurt parfait, we offer the hummus. Come October, November, we're gonna be doing a soup every, once a week. We make our homemade soups, whether it's chicken rice, um, we do a vegetable soup, um, chicken noodle soup, we do a chili, so that'll start up in October, November. We do do our vegetables that are fresh from, we're gonna be implementing that, uh, fresh vegetables from our produce that we get in, we'll do the, you know, whether it's, like I said, zucchini, broccoli, cauliflower, um, snack offerings, we, um, as I spoke about, we definitely bring that down a lot. We don't, we really have took away a lot of the sugary snack items, um, and we do the hummus plate, that's a sample of what the hummus plate looks like.
Good to get the samples in the back.
Yes, the samples are in the back. Macaroni and cheese, the macaroni and cheese we do is not, it's not coming from, uh, a packaged product. It is, we make our macaroni and cheese in-house, um, it's not taken from a freezer and putting it in the, that's what used to be in Locust Valley, when I came here, we changed that right away. And the chicken vegetable lo mein, which, believe it or not, in the elementary level, they do tend to like that. This is a sample of our serving lines, where we offer the fresh fruits and vegetables every day, um, we will always have a fresh cut-up fruit on the lines. And what makes a meal? So I've been working with the schools a lot on that. I am going to be doing the open houses, um, the back-to-school nights, and just have a table there to explain, I think there's a lot of misconception on what makes a meal, the kids don't really understand. So like, I've been encouraging them, they need to take a fruit, they need to take a vegetable, um, you know, so we're, it's a work in progress, we are, you know, they are getting familiar with it, um, especially at the middle school level. I've been with them every morning, and I'm like, okay, what did you forget on your, your plate? And they remember, okay, yes, you're right, I have to take my fruit, you know? So, um, we are working with them on that. I am going to do, um, the open house tomorrow night at the middle school level, and like have some sample plates there, so even parents understand. I think a lot of it with the, um, going provision two and the free meals, a lot of people think that our food quality is gonna change, and our food quality is not changing. We are still doing the same foods. Our chicken is, you know, antibiotic and hormone-free, whole muscle, white meat chicken, we do Tyson, 100% beef chicken, uh, beef. So our quality- the free meals, a lot of people think that our food quality is going to change. And our food quality is not changing. We are still doing the same foods. Um, our chicken is, you know, um, antibiotic and hormone free, whole muscle, white meat chicken. We do Tyson, uh, hundred percent beef chicken, uh, beef. Um, so our quality is not changing. That is still going to remain the same. And you want to talk about the meal, parents?
So thank you first, thank you everyone for having us here tonight. We really appreciate that. Thank you, Melissa. It's really, it's really nerve wracking to get up and speak in front of everyone like this. So a huge thank you to you. And thank you, we have some folks from food service in the back of the room too. So thank you to them, uh, for being here tonight. They worked hard to help put together some of the snacks up there. So for sure, don't, uh, don't skip out on that. So I, I wanted to talk a little bit, I've been involved in this district from inception when Aramark was invited to take over the contract. And I think we have an awful lot to be proud of in the work that has been done in that time. So just a, a little reminder perhaps to those who may not know, but Melissa is actually the only Aramark employee in the district. So we work in strong partnership with the business office as well as with their food service staff. So her job here is to support in training, help to reinforce and maintain the regulatory environment. And again, use all of the Aramark resources that come to this district to help provide, um, better support in terms of food quality, resources for procurement, um, again, and just making sure that we're following those state and federal guidelines. And in doing so, also being sure to have nutritious options that students actually want to eat because it might not matter if the meals are free or it won't matter for long if we're not giving them options that they want to return for, right? So just a really quick overview of, of numbers, which is boring and we've heard finance is not the number one thing that matters at all in this district, but there is something at least to be resolved to, that this is a self sustaining program that has only grown in time. So I'll start with actually numbers that are not on the screen, but in, since we took over the contract to last year before the meals went free, we noticed immediately an opportunity to grow breakfast. The school district only had breakfast at the combined secondary middle and high school. And in that time, breakfast was added to every other building in the district, growing the overall district participation forty percent from when we first took over here since Melissa has been in, in the seat. And then the bread, the lunch has also grown by five percent in that time. Now flip from September. So those were the results from the month of September, the year prior to Aramark taking over to where we were September of last year. Now with the preliminary results only of September ninth of this year, we have increased breakfast by three hundred and forty-three percent this year versus prior year, and lunch has increased by thirty-seven percent. So again, this is the impact that we're seeing to the federal free and reduced breakfast and meal programs going to provision two. So all of the students in the district can now eat for free. It's made that nutritious food an awful lot more accessible, removing the boundaries that may have been in place for some of those families. We all know that students can't learn if they're, if they're hungry, right? So again, just huge kudos. We've come an awfully long way, but we're not done yet. And I would be remiss if I didn't allow Melissa the opportunity to talk about what she still has planned for you for this year. Thank you.
So my focus this year is on the elementary schools. Um, I plan on spending a lot of time at the elementary schools, um, trying to do more what we do at the high school. Um, we, that's why I have changed a lot. So I have already started with pulling all the prepackaged like breakfast foods that we do as far as, um, we did mini maple waffles, we did the pancakes, uh, mini pancakes in the bag. So I pulled all of that from the, uh, breakfast program and we do the fresh eggs in the morning along with smoothies and, um, avocado toast and stuff like that. Um, I also pulled, as far as the lunch goes, I have pulled the more processed foods as far as pizza crunchers and pizza max six. And I have geared towards more scratch made foods. So, um, we are trying to change our menu more to be more scratch made products, um, more healthier options. And we are, you know, it, it is a little challenge as far as, you know, with staffing goes and equipment goes. And so, you know, we are taking baby steps and we will hopefully get to a place where we are at what we're doing at the secondary level. Um, I think we, I have already seen such a change already from last year in the elementary schools, but I think with me working closely with them, I feel that we can get to an even better level. Um, and so, um, that's pretty much it. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Melissa. You know, I've been, uh, shadowing, following you around the building for many years, um, to see the program grow. We really appreciate all the work that you and your team are doing. Uh, my son came home today and said, I had the best, I think it was a barbecue chicken cheese wrap. It was the first I've ever heard of it. So thank you. Um, you know, and our goal as we continue is always to look on ways that we can improve. Hopefully if we're selling more lunches, we can look to improve our, um, you know, our equipment and obviously the quality. Some of the things that the board has discussed, obviously is looking at, you know, GMOs, uh, organics, um, and how can we obviously move more in that direction, uh, less hormones and so forth for the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting you.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
I just have one more question for, um, sorry, George, just for unfinished business if we can get on the docket. Um, we had discussed outdoor play, um, that we were going to have brought back to the board in September. Um, I was, I thought it would be in the superintendent report, but I'm just wondering if that will be addressed. Um, for those in the room, we, the board had unanimously requested that the district re-implement morning play, um, on the playgrounds and in the fields before school. Um, and we were waiting an update on when that would be enacted. Uh, Dr. Turnout, do we have any, like, date on when that will be represented to the board?
The board, as a group, did not ask me to move forward with that. I don't have anything from the Board of Education. If they're directing us to look at that again, then that has to come from all of you to the board president, and then the team will begin to work on it again.
Uh, okay. It was made as a unanimous, we actually took a vote in public. We went down through the entire board and took a show of hands on who would like to move forward. Um, and we're promised that it would be brought back at the September meeting. We actually also have correspondence from the superintendent saying that you were already at work on it and had already met with the principals and were reviewing it for implementation. So I, I, I'm sorry for not understanding the disconnect here, but it was clearly articulated by the Board of Education in public and communicated back. Is there anybody on the board with a different understanding?
No.
So at the agenda setting meeting, which all the board members are invited to, it was not brought to our attention. So any board member, you all get the invitations, please put it on the agenda setting and it'll be on that board meeting. But if it's not mentioned there, then we're not going to be prepared to discuss it.
Okay. Well, apologies. At the August meeting, we were told that it would be put on the September meeting. So I didn't believe we needed to re-articulate. Um, in addition, I also have some new business. Um, as mentioned earlier, there are members of the Board of Education that voted to, um, open an investigation against me a few months ago. Um, subsequently, I have placed multiple FOIL requests to the district, um, starting in July and received a, uh, response that it would take four months. I have now resubmitted them, um, as of last, as of the beginning of August, and was told that I would receive a response by September ninth. Um, I'm submitting these to the official record. I will give them to Allison to include in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting. That's all.
Pertaining outdoor play, can we have an update, please, in Oc-, for the October meeting?
Absolutely.
Proceeding with the consent agenda, are there any items that members would like to discuss or pull from the consent agenda?
Um, I just had a quick question. There was an MOA, I believe, for some additional hours for a staff member. Do we know what, um, position or building that's for?
Which item?
Um, hold on a second. Hmm? It was on.
Um, I can clarify that. That is, it's under the Personnel Action Report. It's the second attachment that the board members were given ahead of the meeting. Uh, and those who ask for a hard copy, we're giving a printed copy of it. And it's detailed in there.
Right. It just says, um, a teaching assignment.
If you read down towards the bottom of the page, it explains in the bulleted numbers, the staff member question.
I'm sorry, it explains what?
I can answer the question. It's at the middle school, high school.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. Do we know what it's for or what area?
Family and Consumer Sciences.
Okay. Is this going to be a teaching position or?
It's a current teaching position where the way that the schedule works between the middle school and high school, it required, um, instead of a perfect five classes every day for the entire year and an imbalance of sections, over the course of the year, the teacher is teaching the same number as a regular full-time equivalency.
Thank you.
Other questions or items for discussion in the consent agenda? May I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Matt, do I have a second? Holly, all those in favor?
Good evening, members of the board and the community. First and foremost, I want to make it clear that I come from a place of love. I hold no hate in my heart and for any child. Whether they are struggling, misunderstood, or simply trying to find their way, my own family and children have personally experienced discrimination. And I know how painful, isolating, and unfair it feels when your rights and dignity are taken away. That experience is why I care so deeply about fairness, safety, and the well-being of all children in this district. With that being said, I believe we must pause and carefully consider the direction of some of our policies. Gender dysphoria is a real and difficult condition, and those who experience it deserve compassion, understanding, and access to appropriate support. But it affects less dessert, than one percent of the students. And I worry about creating district-wide policies that impact the other ninety-nine percent in, in ways that may not be in their best interest. When we build new facilities, restructure sports programs, or create rules that blur biological distinctions, we are not only placing a heavy focus on a very small population, but we may also be introducing safety concerns, confusion, and unintended consequences for the majority of our students. Biology is not something we can change. And ignoring that reality does not set our children up for long-term success. Instead, it risks the, and it risks creating disappointment and harm later in life. I believe our resources will be better spent on strengthening mental health services, supporting families, and helping all students build resilience, confidence, and leadership. Every child deserves to feel safe, respected, and supported. But no one group of students should be prioritized at the expense of others. So tonight, I respectfully, I respectfully act that this Board of Education to review its policies through the lens of what is best for all students, not just one population. Protecting opportunities for girls in sports and maintaining safe, appropriate spaces for every student is not about excluding anyone. It is about safeguarding the well-being of the majority while still showing kindness and support to those who struggle. I propose we follow Massapequa and the federal order from the United States President to honor Title IX and protect our girls' sports. For those who do not know, the federal law of the land supersedes state laws. Article six, second paragraph of the U.S. Constitution. And, and to protect us from a rogue state, and that is exactly what we are in right now in New York State, it has gone rogue. And if this board or administration is in fear of litigation from the one percent, then I beg you to consider the litigation you're going to receive from the ninety-nine percent. Let us find solutions-
Thank you, sir. That is your time.
-that are fair. Okay. Thank you. Your time.
Hello, I'm Vanessa Hammer. Um, I have a son Nicholas who just started pre-K, um, at Bayville Primary. And, um, very excited to be joining the school district and for all the years to come. Uh, but when we entered this school, myself and a lot of the other parents took our kids out of programs that we really liked because they're entering public school now and we have faith in the system, we believe in it, we want to build a community here. Um, and then we found out this past weekend, uh, we got an email that library class, the once a week trip to libraries being taken away. And then I found out, which I didn't know, that also they don't get gym class anymore and they don't get music class. So they only get to leave the classroom once a week for thirty minutes for art, which is not how it was described on the website. It was not what was described when all of us made the decision to put our kids in this program for pre-K. Um, and I really don't think it's fair. If you look at the, if you go on, um, online, there's like many eighty, hundred-page documents about the guidelines of what, um, the program should be in every grade. And they have one for, for pre-K. It's not as, uh, definite and defined as the other grades. It's more of a general recommendation. But if you compare the four or five documents on what pre-K should be, it clearly states gross motor skills and gym, uh, library, arts, music, practicing instruments, learning instruments. Um, it's part of the definition of what you should do in pre-K. Um, so I don't know why these programs were taken out. And then in the last maybe two days, I've talked about this with maybe five other parents. They had no idea that these programs were not in, were not there. They're also incredibly angry. You, you know, just upset. This is, you know, what we'd like our kids to have a very well-balanced first year. So, uh, my question is, what can we do to hopefully put something like these programs back into the curriculum this year? Um, from what I understand, teachers were moved so that they have to go between schools. And now for some reason, that means they just took the programs away from the preschoolers. Um, but like, can we have parents volunteer- away from the preschoolers. Um, but like, can we have parents volunteer to come in and like help out with gym class? Or can you move the schedule around? I know teachers have like a prep period, so the kids are somewhere when the teacher's in her prep period every day. Maybe they could be in the gym. Maybe they could be in the music room. But what can we do to hopefully fix this now? Not for next year, for now, because the last year you had them. Um, you know, in pre-K, it's not a, not that I'm saying you are. It's not a throwaway year. It's a really important year. These are years that, uh, the first couple of years of school really define how your kid's gonna move forward. That's why it's pre-K supposed to prepare you for kindergarten. So if you only leave the room once a week for, you know, it's not. Um, so anyway, maybe we can make a plan to fix this, I hope.
Thank you, ma'am, that's your time.
Hi, I can answer some of it. I could answer some, you know. So our pre-K program, we grew it this year to an additional class, um, to the Bayville side. And it's a five-hour free program that we agree, we think it's wonderful. It's interdisciplinary, created by the teachers. Whenever possible, like our first year, we didn't offer any specials. And as, whenever there are available spots where we can have teachers teach additional classes, we absolutely do. Um, the teachers are totally able to go down to the library. They're able to use the gym, um, whenever they, whatever they are free, they absolutely can. So like, I could speak to the principals to make sure that they're not. I know that they go outside. They set up obstacle courses in the classrooms. So, um, I definitely, I've stopped in all the pre-K classrooms. And, um, first of all, the kids are amazing, and the teachers are wonderful. And I hope you're having a great experience with your teachers and the kids at the class, because they really are a lot of fun. But we really did, in addition to the addition of a class, we actually, um, had additional, um, classes on A&amp;P, which affects our specials, and LVI. So when you have additional classes right before Labor Day, that also affects a teacher availability. But we will work with the teachers and the buildings to make sure the children are not just in the classroom, and they are available to go. Oftentimes, like our first year, when we did not have any specials, when we implemented the pre-K, sometimes when the classes would go on class trips, and the teacher was available, they invited the kids down, they did do lessons, um, they've done tours of the building, they've gone outside. So I do think that there's flexibility, but because it's a five-hour program, you mentioned the teacher preps, that usually happens before the school day, because it starts. So we do have some flexibility, and again, because we grow the program, we really try to offer a balance of really integrated thematic experiences in the classroom, where they're doing hands-on things. We continue to look at ways to enrich it. We were just, I was just talking to some of our kindergarten teachers today, and we look for ways for having different things being pushed in as well. So it's growing. Um, I'm sorry that that happened, but we did get an additional class on the other side of town, that, again, and we also added the class MVP. So we, um, that's a good thing. That's a great thing. So, but we're always open to ideas, and we do love volunteers. So definitely talk to your principal, uh, because we do, uh, we've gone to many parent council meetings, and we do love when the parents come in, read, get involved. And if you have a special, um, you know, things you want to teach the kids, we love that. So, um, definitely don't be afraid to reach out to the principal, okay?
Ms. Hammer, thank you for bringing this up to the Board of Ed. I just would like to thank you, because this is the first time we're hearing of this. And unfortunately, it shouldn't be, but we do appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Um, I specifically emailed the Board of Education and the superintendent last week, asking this exact question, saying that if we added three new sections, do we have enough staff to provide the same level of service? And I was told, yes. And so, this is, in my opinion, unacceptable to be taking away services that we were under the impression would be there. As somebody who fought honestly and openly vigorously against the pre-K program, because I didn't want to see our local programs go under, which they are, little by little, and to maintain those integrities, um, we were assured that we would have the most robust program here in the district. And so, um, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we maintain services year over year, and if we're not, to educate the parents, um, so that they can make decisions. So I'm sorry, but I appreciate you being here.
I will reach out to the building principals tomorrow, but I do know, I actually spoke with Mr. Cohen, and he's working on a schedule to make sure when the library is open, that the students can go down. And I believe the same thing happens with the gym when it is free, so that the kids have a chance. And they're building routines now as well. They're, you know, part of the school community. So I will reach out to them tomorrow. No problem.
Thank you. Barbara Vivona? You okay? Lisa McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Um, by your numbers, I calculated that in this district, we are spending $53,798 per student. This is higher than any district surrounding us on Long Island. With all due respect, Mr. Barnes, when you talk about the possibility of losing $5 million from state aid over a principled argument to follow federal law, I say, do it. Let them threaten you. Forget about that $5 million. I could cut $5 million from this budget like that, and I would start with $2.5 million that you add in for the past six years for the facilities budget, for the facilities fund, which was a complete disaster this past year. It seems like this district has gotten on a gravy train that turned into crazy train. They withdrew $7.3 million for projects that haven't even been bid on. They went ahead and did the turf and the roof, I guess with money from the capital fund, not the capital reserves. And it is September 15th, and those projects are not completed. The Bayville Intermediate Children have not been allowed to go out and play on the field for the last three weeks of summer. I hear how you're so concerned about the children, but it doesn't seem as though a lot of care was given for what happens with these children when they're in your buildings. When are the library and and the cafeteria going to be done? If that money was withdrawn in May, where is it? What account is it sitting in now? So, you want to cut some money? I'll show you where to do it. There's plenty of money to cut. You've got capital reserves that are the result of overtaxing us every year. Find out what codes the surpluses are in. Go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Cut back. We had $11 million in capital reserves. We had $7-plus million in the capital fund. By my count, that's over $18 million for capital projects. And, and it's a complete mess. So I don't know what's going on, but I think you people really need to make a decision.
Thank you, ma'am, that's your time.
Yeah, cut me off. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. John Del Taro?
John Del Taro, Six Tides toward Bayville. I was shocked, I mean mortified, that Joey Aneah gave his, um, I guess resignation speech this week. Three, four years ago, we moved Joe, excuse me? I was shocked when Joey Aneah gave his resignation this week. I mean, I didn't know about it. I found out today, when Jean said it. Why would a guy that's been here forever, and about four or five years ago, we promoted him to take over the social studies department? I went up to him and said, "Joe, take the job. You'd be great at it." He was hesitant. He took the job. He flourished. He's added on to that. And now, you know, to pass over a guy that was up for a position for an intern number one that can't be approved, because he's got to give 30 days to his other employer, and you lost him. Why? Can anybody in the board answer that question to me? You lose, you try to hire within your own system. You try, you don't try to pull from the outside. Keep people here that know these kids, that have nursed these kids. And now, he's left. And he's not the only one. I'm sorry he left. He was a great guy. But in the future, hire within. A lot of people I look around here that I've been associated with, all got promoted within. You know, that's all I have to say. I can say a lot of other things. That's the only thing I'm saying tonight. And, um, thank you for all your kind words about everything. Um, and Lisa, always a pleasure to listen to you. But you don't know what's on the other side either, Lisa. So basically, just think about who you're hiring, or bring, it's common sense to bring people from within. You guys have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Maureen Lee Antonio?
I wanted to talk a little on the Title IX. Last week, uh, the board president trusted his gut and canceled the meeting. So it's my wish that you would afford the children of the district the same luxury of trusting their gut. By ignoring the federal law and forcing the, forcing the children into uncomfortable situations, you take away the strongest tools they have to keep themselves safe. That gut feeling, that sense that something isn't right. It's, it's their body's natural alarm system, and the board and the superintendent are asking them to ignore it for the comfortable, for the comfort of another child, who has a very legal and viable option on the table. You're telling them to be polite, and respectful, and inclusive. They're told not to make a fuss, not to be rude, not to overact. But when we dismiss a child's instincts, we take away their ability to recognize danger and to act on it. We need to empower children to understand that it's always okay to say no, to walk away, to seek help, to stand up, to defend themselves, even if it feels uncomfortable or might upset someone. Their safety matters more than social niceties. This is especially important, as they leave this fantasy land of Locust Valley High School, of 1,800 students total, and make their way out into the world, into campuses with 30, 50, 60,000 students, semesters abroad, or wherever the world takes them. By encouraging children to honor their gut feelings, we're giving them permission to protect themselves. We're also sending a clear message. Your body, your boundaries, and your instincts matter. In the end, trusting their instincts could be the very thing that keeps them safe in difficult situations. And as the adults in their lives, it is our responsibility to reinforce that trust every day. And if you're making that compromise, and if you're making them compromise themselves at school for money, you're not the good guys. Figure it out.
Thank you. Carrie Lamb?
Hi, thank you. I'm Carrie Lamb, and, um, yeah, thank you for what you just said, "body and boundaries," and hearing that resonated with me and thinking, does that also matter for transgender students? Wasn't really a question, just sort of putting it out there. Um, I'm a parent and, uh, of an 11th grade student, is one of Locust Valley's transgender students. Um, he's a, he's, I'm sorry, a wonderful kid.
Just please refrain from speaking about specific students, even your own, in public.
Sorry. I, I, my name is Carrie Lamb, and I'm the parent of a transgender student here at this school. And I haven't come to a lot of meetings, and I don't show up a lot. I worry about his safety, but, you know, I don't anymore. There are more important things at stake. Um, there is another side to this argument. There are other people involved. And I think one of the most important things is that the parents and people here should know these students. They should know my student. They should see humanity. You, you need to know, we are people. This, my, this, my child is a wonderful person. And talking about taking away his rights, it's, it's painful. So anyway, I'm just showing you who I am. You're speaking to me when you say these things. You're speaking to my child. Um, and as far as students, he's one of the best that you have. So take that to heart. Thanks.
Thank you. Marilyn Messias?
Hi, my name is Marilyn Messias. I was watching, um, this meeting from home on YouTube. So I heard, uh, some parents spoke very badly regarding the student that everyone is worried about. I have a daughter in the middle school. I am not concerned if my daughter has to share a bathroom with a transgender, a gay, a lesbian. I am okay with it. I expose my child to every type of person out there. I am happy that we're talking about this. I'm happy that everybody's open-minded, and everybody can agree and disagree. But your job is to protect every child in this school. This is just not boys and girls. This is everyone in general. If everyone has an issue with them sharing a bathroom, or sharing a locker, I'm pretty sure the school can accommodate them and do something. And if you guys are scared of money, I'm pretty sure in the budget, you guys can figure it out. Thank you. And I love the fact that you guys are here listening to this. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn? Sure.
We have gender-neutral restrooms, and we have a gen, a gender-neutral locker room space.
Yes. Correct. We're talking about protecting all of our students. All of them. Not just one, not just some. And I think there's also a large contingent of parents whose children are not comfortable in the locker rooms, and they're not comfortable in the bathrooms. And it's our job up here to make sure they're accounted for as well.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Matt? Second. Christina? All those in favor? Get home safely, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.